Mr. Mayor, I have a question under Ms. Laney on the council in general.
Under Ms. Laney?
Yes, please.
I didn't hear what that was, Mr. Mayor.
It's about processing the city council and direction as a group.
We move into the consent items to approve. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent items as written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. There is a scheduled hearing, ordinance, amending municipal ordinance, zoning ordinance.
Councilman.
Mr. Bruce Peterson.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council. The ordinance that was introduced calls for a rezoning of a portion of the former airport property. It consists of the two phases that the city has had released by the FAA to date. Currently, the entire site is zoned government institutional and the planning commission and staff are recommending that it be rezoned so that the property south of the newly extended Wilmer Avenue be zoned I-2 and that the balance of the property in phases one and two be zoned I-1. This will provide for the continued planning and installation of infrastructure into the newer section of the park in 2014, and the Wilmer Avenue completion is already scheduled for this year. We anticipate with those infrastructure changes and the land releases that we will see a renewed demand for industrial property, and we want to be ready to offer this property to businesses as they seek it. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Thank you, Bruce.
Do we have a motion?
A roll.
Hearing, sir. Public hearing, I'm sorry. We open the public hearing, and is there anyone to speak to the what Bruce said? Hearing not, I will close the public hearing, and we'll open it for discussion amongst the council. Council.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish it. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question of Mr. Peterson.
Go ahead.
Industrial Drive, which is County or State Highway 40.
Yes.
Correct. Is that been turned back, or will that section that is in red that you're rezoning, State Highway 40, is that going to be turned back?
That's already been turned back from the state to the city.
That has been completed?
I believe 2007 or 2008. We received everything east of County Road 5, new County Road 5, up to Highway 12.
Okay, so that has all been completed?
That's correct, yes.
Further discussion? Councilman Christensen, did you have a question?
It was on that same topic. Is the industrial drive going to stop then at County Road 5?
Industrial coming in from the west. That segment between County Road 5 and Wilmer Avenue will cease to become or will cease to be used as a public street. At that point, it will be only to provide access to Jennio, and from the access to Jennio's parking lot west to County Road 5 will be blockaded for removal. So, Wilmer Avenue is replacing that.
Okay, but it may remain and become a private street so they can access Jennio.
Well, Jennio will retain their access off of Wilmer Avenue using a portion of the old highway down to their driveway as it currently exists today, and then everything between their driveway and County Road 5 would be blocked off and subject to future removal.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
Roll call. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Darkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Bruce. At this time, we'll move into the presentation of the Wilmer Downtown Parking Assessments. Mr. Bernard or Adam?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity today to present the ongoing work of the Wilmer Downtown Parking Assessment. I'm going to give a brief overview of the process in general, and then I'm going to let Lance Bernard from SRF Consulting Group talk about the particulars of where we stand to date. Just to bring everyone up to speed, as many of you know, last fall, we entertained the proposals from a variety of parking expert consultants to prepare a downtown parking assessment for the city of Wilmer. Now, this parking assessment was meant to be something that took a really careful, fact-based, empirical look at the status of parking in downtown, and then will ultimately make recommendations for how to address any shortfalls or concerns or issues or access problems or wayfinding problems that we might have identified through the process. The selection committee, which consisted of representatives from the EDC and Rice and the city of Wilmer and the Wilmer Design Center, selected SRF Consulting Group based primarily for their ability to use modeling software to give us a really good and data-driven look at the downtown parking situation. Since that time, we have convened a technical advisory committee, which includes members from those organizations I just mentioned, but also the Chamber of Commerce, the downtown business community, the county, and several other representatives. And that committee has now met twice with the consultant. Where we are right now in the process is that there's been a lot of data gathering done. Lance is going to talk about that in a little bit more detail, but I wanted to again reiterate sort of how the process is being managed and how it's being funded, because I know that that's often an important consideration. I'm serving as the facilitator of the entire process, so I don't really have a say in the matter. I'm just sort of the client, making sure that the meetings are held and the meetings are met, and the consultant does their work. And my time is paid through a grant from the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota via the Wilmer Design Center through what they call technical assistance funding. The consultant itself, SRF Consulting Group, is paid through a combination of the EDC and Rice Hospital, who are essentially splitting their fee. The city has provided staff time in the form of Bruce and Megan primarily, and also Chief Wifels has been attending our meetings for the technical advisory committee, and also some space, but no actual cash in hand. So, what we hope to get to by the end of the process in June is, as I said, a factual, sort of empirically based look at parking downtown, and then also some recommendations for how we can move forward. And with that, I'm going to let Lance Bernard from SRF talk to you about the particulars of that, where we are right now, and especially his data gathering practices to date. Lance?
Thank you, Lance, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about our efforts. Really, this again has been a really collaborative effort in working with city staff, the Design Center, and the advisory committee throughout this process. Right now, we're really kind of finishing up the early phases of this plan. We've been focused on a number of tasks, primarily existing data, existing condition data analysis, looking at existing land use patterns in downtown and the current parking supply in downtown. And we've been working through this effort on a six-month timeframe. We started on January of this year, and we're anticipated to end, end of June. And so, right now, really, our efforts have been really focused on the three tasks that are highlighted in the red box that we've completed to date, that I'll spend a little bit time talking about each of those and kind of how we've gotten to where we are today in the planning process. Really, the first phase of this project is we really needed to have a clear understanding of the existing land uses and parking spaces within downtown. So, we had a number of folks out in the field early on collecting data, hand counting every individual parking space in downtown. And so, we inventoried that parking supply by doing this in a digital format, and this gives us the ability now to look at block by block of what exists for on-street and off-street parking, but also gives us the ability to look at the number of spaces that might be ADA accessible, which ones might have time restrictions, which ones are publicly and privately owned. So, all of that early on data collection is important for us to be able to move forward with some of our initial kind of recommendations that we'll be looking at later on in the process. But we also needed to understand existing land use patterns, so we've worked closely with the city staff of trying to identify what currently exists in downtown by specific land uses. It's important for us to early on understand how many residential units are in downtown, how many commercial spaces by square footage, and retail. All that information helps drive some of the parking needs that downtown may need, which I'll talk a bit about here in a moment. So, early on, as I mentioned, we collected a lot of data in regards to parking inventory. I thought this was just kind of an interesting number that hasn't been calculated in the past with downtown Wilmer, but currently, right now, we see there's approximately 2,700 parking spaces in downtown, which is there to help accommodate the existing needs from a land use standpoint. So, as part of this process, one of the key things that we needed to achieve in the parking supply is understanding what's currently being utilized today. And so, in late January, we had folks out in the field counting the number of spaces that are being utilized during different periods of the day, and we focused on some peak periods. Typically, those peak periods are 9:00 AM, 2:00 PM, and 7:00 PM. So, we counted every single space during those timeframes on January 30th, and then we've also been out in the field a few other times to help validate some of those utilization counts that we've been looking at within the area. And I believe you did receive, I think, the first memo that we provided that highlighted some of these findings that you can reference, that provides some other graphics that show block by block where some of that utilization is occurring. Typically, our industry standards show that if you do see a block that is reaching about 85% in utilization, that there may be a potential concern, that there needs to be additional parking in some of those areas. So, we wanted to pay some close attention to some of those areas if they were starting to reach those utilization numbers, and again, some of that information's highlighted in the memo that is in your packet. In addition to that initial kind of existing condition analysis and understanding how parking's being utilized in downtown today, we needed to then also understand what is generating those parking needs from a land use perspective. So, we wanted to take a look at a couple different ways of doing this. Our first approach is looking at what, again, the kind of the industry standard is for what type of uses generate certain parking needs. So, one of the quick examples I threw up there is that within these industry standards, they show about a thousand, per thousand square foot, you need about 0.62 parking spaces. So, using that type of information early on in the process, we were able to pair that with what we know exists in downtown from a land use perspective to see, is there currently enough parking in downtown to meet the needs that exist today from a land use perspective? But then, we also wanted to make sure that that was an accurate representation of what we're seeing from the utilization survey process. So, we kind of ran these two different scenarios to see what type of parking demand is needed in downtown from the industry standard, and then also based on the utilization surveys that we did in January. And so, throughout all of this kind of early phases of data collection, again, we're really trying to just understand what exists today and trying to verify some of that data and work with the advisory committee on those data. But generally, what we're seeing right now as a whole collectively within downtown, that there is, parking is being met, but there's still some of those areas that we think there are some concerns based on the utilization surveys that we need to spend some more specific time on, looking at whether or not we need to look at some strategies, whether it's wayfinding or figuring out why some of those lots are being utilized more than others, and how come some are not being utilized as greatly as we think they should. So, ultimately, this is just our first initial phases of the data collection, trying to get a good feeling for what is going on in downtown from a parking perspective and how that's meeting existing land use needs. So, our next steps, working again with advisory committee, Design Center, and city staff to verify some of those data results and really move forward now with looking at what some of the potential strategies and solutions might be to address maybe some shortfalls within the downtown today, and then also how that looks like in five, 10, 15 years as downtown redevelops, because we want to make sure that there's enough parking supply to meet any type of future needs within downtown. So, some of the conversations we had today at the TAC meeting was understanding what downtown may look like in five or 10 years. So, that gives us a foundation to move forward with some future recommendations, but we're still not at that process yet. We're still looking at the data and trying to figure out how to move forward with some strategies and solutions. So, with that, that's what we wanted to share with you tonight to keep you up to speed with data collection methods, letting you know that we've been out in the field over the last couple of months collecting data, but certainly would welcome any questions or comments to the council or mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Could you go back to the previous slide, please?
This one?
No, that's fine. Future, right down there, the very last item, "Future redevelopment may pose greater demand."
Yes.
Could you define that a little more?
So, what we wanted to look at and what we want to understand is what type of development may occur in downtown, whether it's a year from now or five years from now, and if development, say, intensifies or you add more residential units within downtown, they in turn would typically probably need some parking to accommodate that new intensity or those new type of residential uses. So, we had these, we're starting to have these discussions, understanding what downtown might look like. Is it going to intensify, and if it does, what type of parking is needed for that type of redevelopment or new development that might happen?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One other question. As far as the parking goes, you've worked with other cities before in parking studies. Have you ran into or heard of other cities passing ordinances requesting that in a limited space where parking is very tight and there's new industry, there's new industry or new company that's coming into town to build something, whether it be high-rise apartment buildings or grocery store or who knows what, that they also have to provide so many parking spaces due to the impact of the spaces that they're taking up and their drop, that they wouldn't be responsible to, or we'd have to, we could request that?
That the private entity would be responsible for those?
Yes.
Yeah, there are a lot of precedent examples out there in regards to city ordinances that require a certain development through their development review process, that they need to show that they're accommodating certain parking supply, and that's something certainly we want to explore as we get further down in the process, if that would be an appropriate solution or strategy for this case.
That's my concern. Thank you.
I read somewhere, I can't even tell you where, that for parking needs, we want the person that's parking their car to be able to see where they want to go. Does that make sense?
Yep. Yeah, there are some examples where you want to start to look at wayfinding measures, strategies, and signage. So, some of the things that we've seen currently today with the utilization counts, we've seen a few lots in downtown Wilmer that may not be utilized to their fullest potential. And so, right now, we're starting to ask ourselves, is there signage that needs to direct people to those underutilized lots, or is there wayfinding measures to get them there?
I ask you, does that eliminate parking lot ramp, for example, or over by the hospital?
Does that eliminate the option for a parking ramp? I don't think at this time we really have any understanding of whether or not additional, like a structure or facility like that's needed. I think wayfinding strategies are probably a separate, separate component to this study.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? A question on encouraging parking in certain areas. You said there's some areas that are underutilized. Is there ways to encourage people to park in those and not necessarily in other areas? I mean, referring to like the on-street parking in front of a business, maybe want to keep that more as a transitional or turnover parking?
Yep.
So, that customers coming to the business will be parking in the street and more long-term parking into some of these other areas? How do you encourage that and enforce that?
Well, I think right now, that's kind of the balance we want to find, is try to understand where we can encourage customers or patrons in downtown where they could utilize some of these lots. And I think part of that encouragement is trying to use some of those wayfinding strategies that I mentioned. There's certainly a number of different efforts in communities that I've seen where they've just done informational pamphlets to show where the public parking is in downtown, where those lots are. So, there's different things that you can consider and look at to try to encourage people to use some more surface parking lots for long-term type parking needs. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, so it can be done either through your parking regulations or information.
Yes.
Councilman Darkin, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your really good report. I'm a huge believer in information is power, and this is full of a lot of power. One of the things that, as far as data is concerned, parking, 2,688 is a lot of parking spaces. One would think we have sufficient parking. Back in 2010, the city did do a community budgeting survey, and they listed 34 different items, and of those 34 items, parking was not one that showed up on the list of citizens, 356 of them. Public works, maintenance, police patrol, drugs and gangs, street construction, stormwater management, water, sewer availability, economic development, fire department, parks. Anyway, I think parking is eventually going to be an issue, you know, and this study is a good baseline, you know, for that purpose. I'm not sure that as a single council member, that I think that downtown parking arises to that level right now, but again, having access to this information is very powerful, and thank you for providing it to the council and to the citizens.
Yep, thank you.
Does your study also tell us of people that employees that park their cars on the street move their cars three or four times a day?
No, we were not able to get to that level of detail in this report to understand where employees are parking, whether they're on-street or off-street, but certainly, the utilization survey data really provides, I think, some of that insight into that. It gives you that picture of how parking is being utilized by block during those peak periods, so, yeah.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
This time, we'll move into the open forum. Is there anybody scheduled to speak?
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor.
No one scheduled to speak? Okay, then we'll go into the Labor Relations Committee report for March 21st. Councilman Ammon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Labor Relations Committee met Thursday, March 21st in conference room at City Office Building. Item number one on the agenda was, we called the meeting to order at 4:45, and we had a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.03. Councilmember Anderson moved closing meeting at 4:50 pursuant to statutes 13D.03, discussed labor negotiation changes and strategies, or strategies, and it was seconded and carried. Meeting reopened at 6:05, and that motion carried. Item number three was to discuss, discussion of process for upcoming performance evaluation of City Administrator Stevens. Committee discussed, reviewed various forms for evaluation of the city administrator, and we discussed with Ms. Stevens and myself that we would work out, work on a form that would be appellable to both sides. Some of those copies, if you're interested, it would vary completely from what the previous survey was. And that we're going to have an opportunity to review the completed evaluation in advance of any meeting to discuss, to discuss the same, so that will be coming up later. I also distressed the importance of adhering to Minnesota statute data practices, State Data Practices Act, and suggested using the city attorney as a conduit for individual forms completed by the city council members, as has been done with the Wilmer Municipal Utilities. This was for information only. Item four was, Ms. Laney also, raised the issue of legislative relations and suggested that city councils become more active with the city-state legislators. Mr. Anderson attended the Minneapolis, in Minneapolis, the legislative update and lobbying efforts, and he's also suggested that additional council members participate in the city's legislative visits to St. Paul with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and if we have the time, I'm sure we all can participate. I also wanted to stress that we have, well, I'll get to that later. Ms. Stevens also stated that Lake Minnesota Cities has different policy committees in which she and the finance director currently serve on, but elected officials can also Mr. Christensen asked about the hiring of a new city engineer, and Ms. Stevens agreed that this engineer is an important position, and stated that the only reason she had held off on hiring the position was considered some possible restructuring of duties in planning, engineering, and public works, and I believe that's due to the reorganization study that's coming up.
That is correct.
Also, in the discussion, I suggested some thoughts of mine that was not reflected in the minutes. I'd like to have that corrected, please. I stated the need or consideration for the council to consider updating briefings with the staff, the mayor and council, on reviewing our goals on a monthly basis to discuss where our goals are, who is responsible for implementing those, and what the next action step is, and that can be brought back up at, under Ms. Laney, under the next Labor Relations Committee meeting, so if you have any discussions on that, that was a point of topic that I feel is very, very, very important, and we don't sometimes sit down and discuss our goals and objectives, where we are, and what are we doing about it, and how are we going to accomplish, and who's responsible. And we need to get that chain of command set with staff and ourselves so we understand which direction we're going. Right now, we seem to be bogged down in our day-to-day operations. That's my public comment on that issue, but I did express the same thoughts at the committee, and those were not reflected in the minutes. With that, I move to file the minutes. Mr. Mayor?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for March 21st. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christians.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As to item number three here at the bottom of the page that states using the city attorney as a conduit for individual forms for our administrators' evaluation, I guess I'm not sure why we're doing that, or what's, why is it necessary? We've never done that in the past, and it's usually been a pretty cordial meeting, and I'm not for doing that. I just, I think that's the wrong way to go. I'd like other council members' opinions on it.
Councilman Fagerly?
I don't quite understand it either. We have to submit the evaluation to the city attorney before her evaluation, or he hangs onto it after the evaluation?
Both. Discussion we had, I believe, was that the information can be held with the city attorney, but it should be in a, an area that it's not able to be viewed by other people because of the Data Privacy Act. Mr. Scott, you want to elaborate on that more? I think you were just going to use it as a source of gathering the information, and then it was going to be reviewed prior to the meeting, prior to the meeting, myself and the vice chairman, and then do the evaluation and compile the data, and then update the full council on the evaluation process, and we speak with Ms. Stevens and discuss any other questions we might have with her.
That's Councilman Ammon.
As Councilman Amon, the role I proposed in a meeting with you to provide, I mean, to fulfill here would just be logistical. Obviously, you're talking about an evaluation form that, as soon as any council member starts to complete it, is going to have personnel data that is confidential, it's private, it really cannot be disclosed. Now, to clarify one point, I would not be hanging on to those forms. I would not be keeping them. They need to be kept in a personnel file in City Hall. But otherwise, council members shouldn't really be keeping copies for themselves. It needs to be protected that way. As far as the minutes state that I would be a conduit, I think that comes from a conversation you and I had where, when the municipal utilities had a similar process with their general manager, I simply, I didn't create the form. It was sent to me. I sent it to the commission as a means to efficiently distribute the information. They were then returned to me, and I simply forwarded them back to the appropriate commissioner in that case. And I'm happy to do that here. I don't absolutely have to do it. It was just a suggestion I made.
Right.
In any event, this is all the process for how this unfolds is something that needs to be agreed upon with the city administrator, and that is, I understand, still to take place.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I kind of thought, at the labor meeting with Mr. Christensen, thinking contrary, I thought it was kind of the consensus of the committee that we would go ahead and forward it to the attorney. I don't think it's a big deal one way or the other. I don't think it's worth discussing to any great length.
Any further discussion? Councilman?
Not on this, but I do have a question on another item, so.
Okay. Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This process is, should be relatively simple. I don't know why we're changing it for what we've done in the past. We fill out the forms, we meet as the council in a closed meeting, we talk about it together. Our administrator comes in 20 minutes later. We go over it with the administrator. We hash things out, and it's done. And we hand the forms in. I mean, they don't have to go to a conduit person to hold on. I mean, we're making, we're making the process cumbersome.
What happened to the forms?
Pardon me?
What happened to the forms after you handed them in?
The administrator got them. I know, I mean...
They go in the personnel file.
Okay.
We used to hand them all to me from my recollection. I was here, and maybe he put them in the file, maybe he didn't. I don't know. But the process should be simple. It shouldn't be so cumbersome and wondering where this is going to go. I mean, we're not going to, it's private data once we hand it in, and why we have to send it to St. Paul to our city attorney and then bring it back here. This doesn't make sense to me. Can't we do this just simple? Things are complicated enough, and to me, it's a distraction. Let's get the forms, fill them out. I don't know if we have to make a motion on that, or if it's just understood, or it's confusing enough having parliamentary procedure explained to us, and we're talking about this. I don't even know if this is proper. But it is part of the discussion. And again, I'd like other council members' feelings on it, I guess. I want to keep it simple and not so cumbersome.
Councilman Johnson, do you have something to?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I guess I was a little not sure, I guess, what went on at the committee meeting, because it says here in the minutes that it was suggested that they be sent to the city attorney, and I didn't. I guess I don't know where it ended up. But I agree with Councilman Christiansen that I don't know why we would be sending them to the city attorney at this point. He's not, I mean, he's an employee of the city, but yet he's not, you know, he's part-time. Just seems a little odd that we would involve somebody in the process that we've not involved before. I don't know why, you know, how that came up, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Just a question, but I thought it was my understanding that the chair and the co-chair were going to meet with Ms. Stevens to determine a process, and that that was part of the agreement with her contract, and that the three of them would come up with a process to be recommended back to us, and that...
Who?
The chair and the co-chair and Ms. Stevens.
Okay.
And that they had done that and had worked with Mr. Scott to try to come up with a process. So I don't, and I thought that that's what they were going to do, was sit down again to come up with an agreeable process between them, and then bring it back to the council to be reviewed.
And that is in the, that is in the city administrator's contract that we agree on the process of evaluation. So we were not able to meet last week, but I did call Mr. Dawkins, and he said sometime this would work out better for him, and before Charlene also. She was not available Friday. But the line, just to let you, for your information, counsel, I passed out three or four different copies from the League of Minnesota Cities. I requested the information from the League of Minnesota Cities on what other municipalities have done in the evaluation process. And there was one in there that I thought was particularly friendly to get dialogue and communication going. And it had a list of seven pages, but there were, I think, about 12 or 14 questions. And it's very important in this process to get the dialogue going between the city administrator and herself. So she has, also has an understanding of the questions prior to the meeting, so she can respond to those questions, and she can address them, and she'll have time to give her report on those questions back to us. So we have open dialogue and discussion. That's the intent of the whole evaluation process. I know it's a little bit different. I personally looked through a lot, a lot of different policies, and I liked one of them. Charlene has a little different opinion on one. She likes one a little bit differently. Basically, it comes down to the same thing. And so I was going to meet with Charlene and Mr. Dawkins again sometime this week and review those things. And if the council prefers not to have Mr. Scott gather all the information, somebody has to be accountable for it. I feel very uncomfortable holding on to all these documents if I should lose them or whatever. I can do that if you want, and I can be responsible. Liz Sessom, my wife, says. But either way, I'll go along with whatever the council wants. And we can either have Mr. Scott gather all that information, we can submit them to him, or we could have him send attention to Audrey Nelson confidential on that, she holds on to them, and then they put in our mailbox. And what I suggest was have Councilman Dawkins and I review the performance evaluations from the council and mayor an hour or two hours before the meeting, and put it in a format so that's kind of consolidated, and then have our, have our meeting. But all those little minor details, we haven't talked with Charlene about yet, and this is not the time or place to do it, but.
Do I need a motion? Councilman Christiansen? Councilman Nelson?
Just a comment. I, in reading minutes, and it feels like what they've suggested to do would be a good process and bring it back to us, so.
Do we need a motion on Councilman Christiansen's thoughts? Okay, so for information only, and, oh, Councilman Dawkins, you had something else you said?
Yes. Item number two, I'm just requesting, will we get a copy of minutes of the discussion that took place on that closed session? And if not, why not?
Councilman Dawkins, that discussion was, as you know, held in a closed session. At this point, the only individuals that reasonably require access to data from that discussion are those committee members that participated in the discussion.
Okay, so we'll...
The answer to the question would be no. That should not be reflected in public minutes.
So the four of us won't get copies of what was said?
The four committee members? No, typically, you would not keep formal minutes. The minutes you've kept here indicate that you've gone into closed session. No votes take place in a closed session, so there's no official action to record.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm reading the contract here, and it says, "The process form criteria and format for the evaluation we mutually agreed upon by the city and Stevens. The final written evaluation, the final written evaluation, the final written evaluation shall be completed and delivered to Ms. Stevens within 30 days of the evaluation meeting." In other words, is that within, before, or after? I read it as after. I mean, this process is, I don't like the process as proposed here. And I stated at the committee meeting, and if I have to make a motion, I will, but I mean, let's keep it simple and bring our forms to the meeting, go over it like we used to do, and then hand them in. I mean, having these things floating out there, whether it's in your possession or the attorney's possession, I don't like that either. I don't know what's happening to it. I want to bring my form to the evaluation meeting, present it, and all of us go over the evaluation. If we, if it's a grade or 1 through 5 on 12 different items, it's pretty easy to do it together and then come up with a conclusion that she's got 5 on this, 4 on this, 3 on this, 5. It's very easy. I don't want my evaluation floating around out there in anybody's hands. I'll bring it to the committee meeting, and we can hand them into the administrator, whoever, and you can put them in the file. But this is ridiculous to be, have them floating around out there someplace. I mean, with all that's happened and the distraction to this council in the last 12 months, my circle of trust has really shrunk terribly. And I don't think those forms should be in anybody's hands but our own. In fact, I'll make a motion that we, that that process be the same as we've done in the past for administrator, that we fill the forms out, bring them to the closed meeting, discuss it, discuss it as a council in closed meeting.
Motion has been made and seconded, and I'm not going to remember all that.
I'll repeat it. The motion is for each council member to bring their evaluation form to a closed meeting. The council discusses it and moves on with their business.
And we have a motion and a second, so that each council person will bring their own evaluation to the meeting and for open discussion. Did I say that properly?
At the closed meeting, yeah. See Kevin Halliday writing quickly there.
Would you like to read that back?
Well, we'll get it verbatim, but more or less, it's the evaluation process is similar as it was in the past, where each council member brings their evaluation to the closed meeting to discuss it there.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Did you have a question first, Doug?
Oh, wait for discussion.
Okay, discussion. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. This is silly. We entrusted the Labor Relations Committee Chair, Vice Chair, and the city administrator to develop a process. Now we're sticking our nose right in the middle of it. That's crazy. Let's let them do what we've asked them to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Nelson?
I don't see that it is the same as the past. You agreed to a contract with the new administrator that had language in it, that she got to be a part of how that process was going to be handled. I think all we're trying to do is for them to establish what form is going to be used and how that process is going to be happening. It does not even address to what you're talking about, Mr. Christiansen, in that when we fill them out, we aren't even that far yet. All they're, all they are agreeing to is how that process, what form is going to be used, and how the process is going to be completed. And I think we ought to let them get that far and bring it back to us, for us to fill out and see what we're going to do. It isn't the same.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Mayor, I would agree with Councilmember Anderson and Nelson that we're not doing things the way we did them before. And I think it's what the committee has developed to, for the chair and the vice chair to meet with administrator and develop the processes to how to, how to complete the evaluation is, I don't think we should be interfering with that.
Councilman Christians?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I understood it at the council meeting, the process that was discussed, that I didn't agree with, is to fill these forms out, send them to a conduit, either Mr. Amon or Robert Scott, get them back to the chair and vice chair, which is Mr. Dawkins and Mr. Amon. Those two would go through them, evaluate them, put all the numbers down, and then bring them to the meeting. Isn't that kind of secretive behind my back? No, excuse me.
That isn't it.
Go ahead, Councilman.
That information is available, that information is available to any council person on those forms to look, we can, as individual council people, go through and look at any individual's performance evaluation, whether it be mine, or Ron's, or Audrey's, or Dennis's, and see what they wrote. That information just cannot be duplicated, and the key thing is it not to be a violation of the Data Privacy Act. We can do that, Ron. We have a right to evaluate, we can make copies of, so everybody's got copies of everybody else's too, if that's what you prefer. But after that meeting, all those copies have to stay there. That's my, my key issue, is that we have to do this correctly, according to the Data Privacy Act, and the information is not duplicated and then given someplace out or gets out. That's my only concern.
Councilman Amon, I have a question. Do all the items that are brought to the evaluation enter into her personnel file?
That's a good question. I believe all that, all that data, I believe, goes into personnel file.
That's correct, Councilman Amon. Mr. Mayor, any information that the council has used to conduct the evaluation of the city administrator, I mean, it should all be in the same form. That's part of the process questions you need to reach agreement with her on. But whatever that is, all that information has to be in her personnel file. All copies should go in her personnel file. The council should not keep any.
Right.
Any further questions, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm a little confused here. I'm kind of looking at these minutes from the Labor Relations meeting, and I, there's a lot of discussion here that I don't see reflected in the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
I agree.
So, and I point out before, I see the word "suggested" in there with respect to some of the procedure, but I'm not sure exactly whether that's, you know, what all that applies to, what was, you know, going to be. And I don't see, I mean, just the reflection here that you'd be meeting with City Administrator Stevens, and I don't see a mention of co-chair Mr. Dawkins. But apparently, that was discussed from the conversation, so I...
Yes, it was, Mr. Johnson. It was discussed that we get together and meet with Charlene.
Okay, and that'll appear in these minutes, right?
That could appear if we want to include those, and if it's that, if it's that important. It was just a consensus that the chair and the vice chair meet with Charlene to discuss it. It's not reflected in here, but if you'd like me to do that, I'm sure that can be changed or amended, because that was a discussion or consensus.
Further discussion? I think we're open for a vote now for the filing of the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
No.
No.
You have a motion.
There's a motion.
A motion and a second.
And a second. Due to the, oh, your motion.
Working on the process, and the evaluation process, Mayor. Not in the minutes yet.
So we'll do that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed to that motion say no.
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 Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Aye.
Amon?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Four ayes, four nays.
And so the mayor breaks the...
The mayor can vote in this instance.
I'll vote in favor of Mr. Christiansen's motion. Motion. And now we'll do the motion for the...
Mr. Mayor, I believe there's a 4-4 vote. You'd have to break the tie.
I did.
I'm sorry. I didn't quite hear that.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
We are completed discussing item three now.
We are completed discussing item three now. I believe Councilmember Dacken had brought up and started discussing item two, then we bounced back to item three. I just want to know if we're done with item three.
Are we done with item three? We're done with item three.
Okay. I had a question on item two. That portion of the closed minutes, Councilmember Dacken was asking about any minutes that may be available from that. If a council member that was not at that meeting wanted to find out or listen to the tape from that meeting, is that a possibility? Or how would... Is that information dispersed to the rest of the council if they were not at a particular meeting that was closed?
Councilmember DeBleek, I don't believe that information can be dispersed to the rest... Can be disclosed to the rest of the council. I mean, at this point, you... The council has chosen to operate, and through the Labor Committee, therefore, only the committee members reasonably require access to that data that was discussed. I mean, at this point, it's not open to the public. Councilmembers that aren't on that committee don't have access to that recording.
Am I right to understand that they need to vote on that, but they... I don't have access to it?
I don't believe so. No action was taken, no votes were taken in the closed session. There was a strategy discussion that took place. That, you know, the Labor Committee is a subordinate body to the council. You could always choose to conduct this type of activity at the council level, but at this, I mean, you know, this is a labor negotiation strategy session with your labor attorney. I'm not exactly sure how the process was made, that it would take place at the Labor Committee level, but that's how my understanding is the city has operated. That's how you operate in this case, having made that decision, having held that discussion at the committee level. Only the committee members have access to that data.
Thank you. Is that a senior question?
Yep.
Further discussion? Then we'll vote on the filing of the minutes.
Filing of the minutes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll go to the finance minutes. Councilman Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't at that meeting, so I'm going to ask that Vice Chair Johnson go through the minutes for us, please.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Finance Committee met on Monday, March 25th, at 4:45 PM at Conference Room One at the City Office Building. First matter of business was a public comment. There was no one present that wished to... A member of the pub... No members of the public present that wished to address the committee. Item two was a discussion relating to the Lakeland Drive preliminary budget. Staff presented a proposed preliminary budget for the Lakeland Drive Improvement Project as submitted by consulting engineer Brian Bolig. Most of the items found in Phase One of the facility plan would be completed under this budget, with the exception of the segment north of the lift station. In addition, quiet zones would also be installed at the Lakeland Drive railroad crossings. Funding for the project, or for part of the project, will be pursued through the State of Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. Local option sales tax funds may also be used, and the estimate for the state aid will be reduced as other funding sources become available. It was noted that Mr. Bolig will be also attending the Public Works Committee meeting scheduled later in the week to discuss options available for the quiet zones. After discussion, it was moved, seconded, and passed to make the following recommendation to introduce... And I would introduce that recommendation, which is a resolution setting the Lakeland Drive Improvement Preliminary Budget at $10,276,000 and to continue to research other funding mechanisms.
Second.
Your motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution setting the Lakeland Drive Improvement Preliminary Budget at $10,276,000 and to continue to research other funding mechanisms. Any discussion? I see Mr. Bolig is here. Do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
A roll call, I'm sorry. A roll call.
Councilmember Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Next item was the adoption of the 2013 A General Obligation Improvement Bond Schedule. Staff presented a projected schedule of events for the 2013 A General Obligation Improvement Bond Issue. It was noted that the Western Collector Project, the Lakeland Drive Improvement Project, and the Waste Treatment Plant Rates will be coordinated with this schedule. This matter was for information only. Next item was the 2012 Preliminary Financial Reports Discussion. Staff requested committee input on financial reports they would like to see presented to the council, such as including a five-year history, where feasible. That matter was also taken for information only. Next item, Future Agenda Matters. Staff noted that future agendas include proceeding with waste treatment rate adjustments, a report in the Local Option Sales Tax Fund, the 2014 Budget Calendar, the Western Collector Project Budget, and the first quarter reports for the Rice Memorial Hospital and Wilmer Municipal Utilities. That matter was also for information only. Last item was reports. The committee received the statewide volunteer firefighter, December 31, 2012, report, the January Rice Memorial Hospital financial report, the CV financial report as of February 28, 2013, and the February Rice Trust report. All matters taken for information only. And if there are no questions or further discussions, I would move to file those minutes.
Second.
Your motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the March 25, 2013, Finance Committee report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Public Works Safety Report for March 26, Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one had to do with the wind generator update from our utilities manager. Mr. Hoppy of the Wilmer Municipal Utilities was before the committee to give an update on the two wind generators located in the high school property northwest end of Wilmer. The project started in 2008 August, and the agreement was signed in May 2009, and construction began in July. Shortly after startup, a hydraulic leak in one unit was discovered that took some time to locate and resolve. Since that time, production has increased each year with downtime decreasing. The utilities has a five-year maintenance contract for the units, and staff is currently being trained in Level One maintenance procedures. The wind generators are anticipated to produce 8.3 million kilowatts per year, and Mr. Hoppy stated that the wind speed needs to maintain at least eight miles per hour, or the units will not turn. He also answered some questions from the committee concerning development of future energy alternatives and budgeting for maintenance and replacement of the wind turbines. That was for information only. Item number two had to do with consideration of a consultant for our Sperryville Lift Station. Request for proposals for engineering, design, and construction-related services for the demolition and replacement of the Sperryville Lift Station were authorized by the council, received, and evaluated by staff. The analysis was based on technical and financial factors. The recommendation of the evaluation team is to accept the proposal by Donahue and Associates in the amount of $52,708.50. Funding is designated in the 2013 Capital Improvement Program and the wastewater treatment budget for the replacement. Following some discussion, a motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to accept the proposal of Donahue and Associates for design and construction-related services for the replacement of the Sperryville Lift Station and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute an agreement.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the proposal of Donahue and Associates for design and construction-related services for the replacement of the Sperryville Lift Station and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute an agreement. Any discussion? Now, is that a roll call?
No.
Yes. Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Item number three was an amendment to an agreement for the airport engineering services. Our staff presented work order number two to the professional services contract with Bolton &amp; Mink for on-call engineering services of miscellaneous items that arise at the airport. The contract provides a mechanism for tracking costs associated with miscellaneous tasks at the airport and provides for potential reimbursement through MINDOT and FAA funds. Once again, after some discussion, a motion is made and passed for the seconded... Passed and seconded for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to approve work order number two with Bolton &amp; Mink on an hourly basis at a not-to-exceed amount of $10,000 for miscellaneous airport services as detailed in Exhibit One.
I second the motion.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the work order number two with Bolton &amp; Mink on an hourly basis at a not-to-exceed amount of $10,000 for miscellaneous airport services as detailed in Exhibit One. Any discussion?
Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Item number four was the MINDOT master partnership contract. Once again, staff presented a master partnership contract between the State of Minnesota and our city. The agreement, which allows the city to collaborate in design, construction, maintenance, and operation of our roadways, replaces the former agreement and will expire on June 30 of 2017. Some examples of tasks the city uses this agreement for are lab materials testing, bridge inspections, and pavement striping. Staff recommended renewing the agreement, and after some discussion, Councilmember DeBleek recused himself as he works for the State of Minnesota. A motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to accept the agreement as presented and authorize the mayor and our city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
Your motion has been made and seconded to accept the agreement as presented and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Any discussion?
Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Abstain.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
The motion carries.
The next item, number five, will have to do with the... An amendment to Midwest Lift Station slash Lakeland Drive Interceptor Agreement. Staff received a fee proposal from Bolig Inc. offering to evaluate alternatives to potentially eliminate the Midwest Lift Station and possibly other lift stations, therefore allowing the entire Lakeland Drive sewer line to operate with gravity flow. The investigation will include an engineering analysis, estimate of construction costs, and will provide an annual cost savings analysis. After some discussion, a motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to approve the amendment to the contract for not-to-exceed figure of $27,000.
Second.
Your motion has been made and seconded to approve the amendment to the contract for Bolig Engineering for not-to-exceed figure of $27,000. Is there any discussion?
Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since Mr. Bolig is here, maybe I could ask him to come to the podium as he explained in three minutes or less the potential savings and exactly what we're talking about here, replacing lift stations, the cost of each, and what that would mean to the city.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity, Councilman Christensen. Through some investigative work after we've gotten through the surveying data for Lakeland Drive, we've determined there may be an opportunity to gravity, extend an interceptor from essentially YMCA next to Olina, northward towards the Midwest Lift Station, and eliminate having to put a three-quarter of a million-dollar lift station in at the former state hospital location, state hospital lift station location. So there's a couple other alternatives that we'll look at that could potentially eliminate up to four more smaller lift stations in the process. And so we'll look at those, evaluate it, look at the costs, and determine feasibility, and then bring that back to staff for consideration.
I have a question. Mr. Bolig, if there's a potential savings of how much?
It'd be three-quarter of a million on the large lift station, the Midwest Lift Station, and then approximately 250,000 to 275,000 on each of the smaller four lift stations.
So there's a potential of roughly a million-dollar savings? Would that be...
Probably almost close to two.
Okay. In the event that they don't... You find that you can't do what you're saying you can do without the lift stations and make it a gravity flow, it would still cost the city $27,000?
That's correct.
Okay. But there's a real good chance that it will provide the savings that you're talking about?
Yes. For the large lift station, yes, we're fairly comfortable that we can extend gravity there for the four smaller lift stations. It's really going to come down to a cost-benefit analysis and determine whether or not those lift stations could or should be considered for replacement.
So what is the question to the council?
Well, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, or seconded for the...
Mm-hmm.
For the $27,000. Amendment not to agree, or not to exceed the figure of $27,000. And I might add, Mr. Mayor, if I may...
Sure, go right in.
You know, there are some savings there, but it's also going to cost us some more money to dig deeper, too. So there is not flat out the cost of the lift stations that we're going to save, but there will be potentially some savings.
So the question for the council is whether they want to spend the $27,000 to find out whether they can save $2 million?
Yes, that's correct.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question on process. A $27,000 bid, is that something that should be bid, or RFPs, or why didn't we get bids on that?
Councilmember Anderson, this proposal would be for professional services for the engineer to provide an analysis to the city council. Professional service contracts are not subject to the competitive bidding law. So that's why it's not put out for bid.
I guess that answers it.
And if I may, Councilmember Anderson, in this case, this is a project this engineer is already working on, and so it's an amendment to their contract, which is why we didn't also put it out to bid, so...
Okay.
So if I may, since you started that, you know, is it part of the fee that they were supposed to have collected?
We have a current... We have a... We had already entered into a contract with Bolig Engineering for this property... For this project to design the Midwest Lift Station and the Lakeland Interceptor. In the course of that, Bolig Engineering brought a proposal to us that they believe it's possible to eliminate that lift station, but felt they needed, and possibly other lift stations, they brought that to staff, felt that they needed to explore that in greater detail, I think is the way I would describe it, and that there would be some additional cost to do so, and it's the staff's recommendation, and that was what was brought to the Public Works Committee, that the $27,000 is money that we should spend to explore the possibility of being able to serve that area with gravity, because if we can serve it with gravity, then we will recoup the $27,000 and more in savings. But, you know, that's... That's the recommendation of staff, and it was not an option that was considered at the original time that the city put out a bid in RFP. We did not believe that gravity was an option, because it's been currently served by a lift station.
Any further questions or comments?
Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
final design is submitted for, excuse me, for approval by the U.S. Department of Transportation. Mr. Pat Curry was there representing the Airport Commission. He updated the committee on some discussions of the commission, one being placing lettering on buildings, designating John L. Rice Field as part of the airport's title, and the other painting of a compass rose on the ramp. Last miscellaneous item was Mr. Ammon requested an update from the Stormwater Task Force, and also the Grass Lake Project be placed on a future agenda. These items were for information only. If there's no further discussion, I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Work Safety Committee report for March 26, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We move into the Community Development Committee report for March 28. Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community development met on Thursday, March 28. Item one was public comment, and no one was there to speak to us. Item two was the Torgerson Property Tax Abatement Request. Staff presented a request from Torgerson Properties for a tax abatement on their upcoming project. The Hotel Restaurant and Conference Center Complex on East Highway 12 is slated to undergo a major renovation expansion over the next two years. Bids have come in over budget and are driving the request for the tax abatement. They estimated the budget would have been like eight million, their bids are coming in at 11 million. The company is requesting that taxes on the increase in value resulting from the expansion or remodel be abated and returned to them for a 10-year period. They have requested that the property taxes paid in 2013 be set as the baseline for establishing the abatement number. Currently, staff is working on the abatement estimates based on the Torgerson projections for changes in net operating income. Any abatement granted to Torgersons would be figured in the levy and would be spread across the entire taxing jurisdiction. The city and any other taxing jurisdiction involved in the abatement will continue to receive the taxes being paid on the current value. Kathy Amet of Torgersons was present to answer any questions regarding the project. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded, and I'll introduce that the council give preliminary approval to the tax abatement and that a public hearing be set for April 15, 2013 to consider the abatement request.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded that the council give preliminary approval to the tax abatement and that a public hearing be set for April 15, 2013 to consider the abatement request. Is there any discussion?
Councilman Ammon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Our parliamentar, our parliamentarian who gave us their class before the meeting said that we should go slowly, so I'm going to try to go as slowly as I can. Tax abatement is a very important part or strategy of the nation to move forward with what they call economic development or growth based on the growth, overall growth of the community and betterment of the community. I downloaded this from, I received this from Ms. Stevens approximately nine months ago, and it's called "The Ugly Truth About Tax Abatements and Strategies to Benefit From Them." And this is put up with the ICMA, which Charlene is a, Ms. Stevens is a member of and quite active in the organization. But there's some startling information in here that I normally don't want to sound negative or against growth, which I'm not, I'm pro-growth. It's at what expense are we going to incur this and how are we going to make up for the losses? In brief, there's 20, over 20-some professors and individual groups who have concluded this document, and what it states is that even after four decades of research, no consensus exists on whether tax incentives have any effect at all. Ninety percent of the tax abatements are not necessary. The city of Minneapolis in the year 2000 stopped giving tax abatements to historically, historical preservation districts and buildings. Most of this information in the article discusses the use of tax abatement for growth of jobs in the community, not to deal with minimum wage, and the benefits back to the community are minimal if not even legible. There's two sides to every story. This is one side of the story. Before we move ahead with a tax abatement to give a tax break, I feel uncomfortable trying to make a decision tonight solely on the information that we have, that somebody wants, wants to have their taxes abated. What are the benefits to the community? What it's meaning is that the taxpayers are going to make up the difference in the valuation. We're going to have to raise our levy to pay for the improvements of Torgerson Properties on their increased improvements. It's, it's at the taxpayer's expense or any other jurisdiction, if it's the county, I understand the school system's not. I'm great and I'm very proud of Torgerson Properties to come, to come ahead with this great plan. That means there must be some growth in Wilmer for tourism and restaurants. But after reading this information, which I read, I read at 10 o'clock till 11 o'clock, and I was up till 2 o'clock, I thought it was important enough not to put the fire out on this project necessarily, but together as a group, as a team, we need to come up with some policy, which I've stated in the past, we're kind of putting the cart before the force here. We're, we're going to approve another tax abatement, not measuring what's been done with the previous tax abatements, what's the measurements of recuperation that the community has benefited from them, and whether or not we should have a 10-year district, a five-year district, a prorated district, we don't know. We're basing this all on speculation with one piece of paper from the Community Development Committee meeting, to make a very important decision on our taxpayers to support this project. We haven't heard from them, but I would think that would be beneficial for all of us to sit down as a group, read the information, and I also just today contacted the League of Minnesota Cities and asked them to send me everything they had on the current state statutes of tax abatements, what requirements we can and cannot abide by. I'm sure Mr. Peterson, our community development director, is aware of those, as maybe is our city attorney. But also see what other cities' policies have been adopted and if we can form one. I, I think right now, again, I'm overwhelmed that there's a company in town or a business in town that has done so well through the last 30-some years that they're able to make the expense to improve their building. That's growth, and I have to congratulate them on that. But at what, what expense is this beneficial to the taxpayers? And I don't think we have that information, and I, I don't want to sound negative again, but I, I just think it would be good strategy and good discussion to look at this and read it. And when I read it, once you read it, I'm sure you're going to wonder why I was awake for three hours, but I think you'll agree with me, it's quite eye-opening, and we have not been informed on that, and we are not professionals in this, in this department, but I don't think it's been weighed and measured, and I just think this deserves, deserves more discussion for given preliminary concept thought to this issue at all. And that's my soap opera tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Fagerly.
Thank you. This is just to set the hearing for the 15th. You can vote on it then, but I think it's pretty impressive, someone's willing to spend $13 million for a new project, and we're out in Wilmer, Minnesota, with a population of 20,000. I can see the city of Minneapolis that have how many thousands of people. The convention center here is dealing with Jackpot Junction, which is doing a major renovation. Prairie's Edge just did a major renovation. We just had a curling championship. They're bringing more beds in, more rooms, so we can do a bigger convention or a national tournament. I think it's pretty awesome.
Oh, I agree, Mr. Fager.
And look what the campus has done in West. Theirs is still going on until 2016. They pay no property taxes. I don't believe they pay sales taxes, anything. And that worked out pretty good, and all the other four of the projects are working out good, and they're coming to an end here in the next two years, so.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well said, Councilmember Fager. I think the thing that we need to remember also is we're talking, we're not taking dollars off the tax roll. They're going to stay at the 2013 numbers. It's the increase in value that won't be added for 10 years. So, we're not going to say, taxpayers, you've got to make up this difference. Those dollars, if they were here this year, they'll be here next year for, for that building. So, it's, it seems like a pretty good deal to me.
If I may comment on that, I, I feel that it is a pretty good deal, quite frankly, Councilman Anderson, but the fact of the matter is, is that, how do, I agree with Councilman Ammon in the sense that, how do we determine tax abatements? We have no real policy. As I understand it, I think.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
To our city administrator, one that was turned down here, not to a terribly long goal.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I, I believe to discuss that issue, you have to relinquish your chairmanship or your mayor's position, temper alibert a mayor pro temp, and from there, you can comment on the issue according to our parliamentarian.
Sorry. I'll pass.
When do we start?
Mr. Mayor, I think it might be appropriate to ask Mr. Peterson to respond to the comments that.
Would you like to do that, Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, I'd be pleased to address any of the questions or concerns that would be laid out in a particular order. Everything's just kind of flowed together, so I'm not exactly sure which question is on the table at this time.
I don't know which question is on the table since I got shot down, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Audrey's, Audrey's. Audrey's is on the quit. Okay.
I was just asking you, he sort of alluded to what the process is, and so I'm curious what the process was for them to come to you, but also for you to address the comments that he was referring to in this document.
The process is actually very simple under statute. A developer simply files a request with the municipality or with a taxing jurisdiction for abatement, and statute is very broad, gives the municipality or the taxing jurisdiction broad discretion in reviewing, evaluating, and granting or denying tax abatements. In the past, we've used our tax increment financing review standards in the course of considering abatements, and the, the third item on our agenda or in the minutes, we'll address that further as far as direction that came from the committee. I think it's really important in the case of tax abatements that you do retain the discretion afforded to you by statute and that you have tremendous flexibility in granting projects. It's always important to look at increased tax base, which isn't realized until the term of the abatement is over. That's correct. There's increased employment that results, in this particular case, because of the impact that has on the number of hotel beds and the convention center, there's spillover impact from a standpoint of the lodging tax, increased utilization of the conference center, and the increased amount of money that the persons using that conference center leave in this community when they visit for a variety of reasons. So, this particular situation is different from other abatements that the council has granted in the past. Traditionally, they have been industrially related, but the statute certainly doesn't require that, and our review criteria for, for TIF stipulate that the council can use it for three different purposes. One is for manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, production, that's one. Second one would be for a bona fide redevelopment project, and the third one would be for a unique project that demonstrates community benefit. And if I didn't believe that number three applied in this particular case, you would not have received a staff recommendation to move forward with this project.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your remarks, Bruce, and I think it'd be nice to let the public know or explain a little more detail, if you would please, about Councilman Ammon's comments about the abatement that might be granted would be figured in the levy and it would be spread across the entire taxing jurisdiction. How does that affect other, would that remark, how would that apply to other property owners and their tax rates?
That's a great question, and in fact, there was some discussion of that among staff this afternoon, and some questions were actually raised, and if the city attorney would be prepared to answer that, I would defer to Mr. Scott.
Councilmember Johnson, I have not looked specifically at the proposal here. I know the estimates are still being developed. If I understand your question, I think it's just a matter of arithmetic. If you abate taxes in X amount of dollars for a specific property, the city takes in that amount less than it otherwise would have without the abatement, which then is spread over the entire taxing jurisdiction, meaning the entire city of Wilmer. I don't have any specifics to give you as far as what the impact would be, to have to be developed.
Well, okay, well, my understanding is, is that the property taxes for the property involved here, Torgerson Properties, would be frozen at their current level, but that future levies by the city to make up for some of that reduction in taxes on the Torgerson property would actually be increased and then distributed amongst the other properties within the taxing jurisdiction, make up the difference for what's being given up in the tax abatement that'll benefit Torgerson Properties, would then be spread out over other properties, depending if the city levy, needed to levy those extra, for those extra funds. So, the other property owners would be at some risk for increased taxes on their properties in order to sustain the tax abatement. Is that correct?
I think you've stated the process accurately, the mechanism of tax abatement. Correct.
And I think it's important with the public that's feeling to know exactly what we're talking about here. That was purpose, that was the reason for my question. Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on that a little bit. Councilmember Johnson, you'd asked for a little deeper analysis of the financial impact, and I sat down with the city assessor, explained what we needed in terms of rough numbers, and using the net operating incomes provided by Torgerson, the current and future property taxes and the city-only portion were able to be calculated and analyzed. At the committee level, I'd estimated somewhere just under $20,000 would be the difference between the current tax, the current city portion of the tax and the future city portion of the tax using the current tax rate. It's actually about $23,000. So, that's the amount of the annual abatement that has been requested. I think it's important to remember that there are a lot of different mechanisms that can be used, a lot of different formulas that can be used in providing an abatement. The council might choose to only do a five-year term. The council might choose to do a declining basis for awarding the abatement. In the past, for one business, we did a five-year abatement with 100%, 80%, 60%, 40%, 20%, paid out over five years. That way, the city assumes its, its share of the increased value quicker. In other situations, we've gone 10 years with 100% of the adjusted basis going to the developer. So, the council has already done it several different ways, and because they are approaching the county for this as well, it's important the city and county act in concert and have some level of agreement. some level of agreement as far as what would be provided in the way of tax abatement. So, if this motion tonight is approved and the council moves forward with the public hearing, it's my intention to sit down with representatives from the county and find out what direction they're interested in heading on this abatement and putting together an abatement plan that's consistent between both jurisdictions.
I appreciate that, Bruce. I thought your estimates were close. I mean, and you seemed confident at the meeting, and, you know, they went up a little bit, but that's, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the feedback, and that's why I brought this up. There are other conditions, Bruce, that are alluded to in this brief ugly truth about tax abatements. You can employ clawbacks to ensure that if performance standards, i.e. jobs, jobs created capital investments, are not met by abatement recipients, part or all the abatement is reimbursed to the community. You can also put, you can target geographical areas. We can limit personal property abatements, differentiate among applicants rather than granting across-the-board abatements to everybody, which also sets precedence. If we're going to do it for one individual company, for a motel or hotel, why didn't we make that available to the Viking Hotel that's doing a complete renovation of all their facilities? You can also define the incentives. You can tailor time the limits, as you alluded to. You can include sunset provisions. And other, this is other recommendations that this report concludes to the council people. Use cost-benefit studies, including consideration of social costs and alternate uses of public money. Conduct periodic evaluations of the overall abatement system, including tax abatements and other tax incentives such as tax increment financing authorities, enterprise zones and downtown development districts. Disclose financial provisions, including private investment. You know, we're going to be making a decision here on a company that's been around for over 30 years, and they're doing quite well, and they offer a great service out there, eat there a lot. But what is their financial ability to absorb this cost or to scale back on the project? The only thing that I've seen so far is that the bids came in under over budget. Well, a budget's a budget. If people build a house and you're over budget, I guess you cut back on it if you want the house. It happens to us in business all the time. We might want a BMW, we end up getting a Chevrolet. And what are the incentives? We're getting part-time jobs, maybe a few additional jobs. We have no guarantee that the jobs create any kind of benefits, which means that the employees that they do hire would all be eligible for social assistance programs, which is going to add to the tax rolls of the citizens in the community again. This is not an industrial growth job. This is a hotel entertainment luxury tax. If you go in there and eat, it's additional, we have to get taxed on our food because it's luxury to go out to eat, staying in a hotel, you're paying a lodging fee, and another tax. These are not necessities of the community to create job growth throughout the community. It's going to a private, or a private entity, which there are others in town that do the same thing. Furthermore, the tax increment financing and the aid that we gave Torgeson Properties, I remember Ole Reynolds on the mayor, and some of you councilpeople might remember, stated, Ole pretty much said, "You are not going to build that convention center," or "You're not going to build the addition and the improvements to the Holiday Inn back then unless you put a convention center in." Well, the mayor got his way with Torgeson's, and we have a convention and conference center, which is great. I'm glad he stuck to his guns, and we gave him the tax abatements or the incentives back then, and now we're doing it again. At what point do we say no? At what point do we say, "You can scale back on this project, do it in increments, budget appropriately, you made business for 30 years, hopefully you've spent some, or you saved some of that money for future repair and alterations, as most business people do, through depreciation and replacement costs that you appropriated in the bank for continuing your operation"? I don't--
Do you have a motion?
No, no, I don't have a motion right now. The only motion I'd like to recommend is that this issue be tabled, and I move that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it for further discussion only.
Motion has been made and seconded for this item to be tabled for discussion only.
No, no discussion. No, you can't say that.
There's no discussion.
No discussion.
No discussion. Motion to table. No discussion.
It's not a debatable motion.
Okay, then I will take back my second.
Do we have a second?
No.
Draw. Mr. Mayor, point of order, excuse me. At our training session earlier, moving to table that requires an instant vote, correct?
Non-debatable.
Non-debatable, in an instant, you have to vote on it instantly.
You can always withdraw your second.
So, we did vote instantly.
But I believe you, I believe you still can withdraw a second if you made that, if you believed you were seconding it for discussion and it's not debatable, I think you're still in order to withdraw your second.
That was my misunderstanding. I'll still withdraw my second.
There's no second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so where are we at?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, so we're in, back to discussion.
On the original, you're still discussing the original motion that was made by Councilmember Fagerly, was to set the--
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman?
I'd just like to ask Bruce, Mr. Peterson, to walk through the process. We are here tonight, what's before us was to have a hearing, so if he would just walk through the process of if we, what will happen if we vote yes and we have the hearing, and you were talking about meeting, et cetera, how does this go forward? And what decisions will the council make later?
Councilmember Nelson, the process from this point forward would be if the council approves the motion to set the hearing, the hearing would be conducted on April 15th. Notice of the hearing will be published in the West Central Tribune, and obviously, it will be publicized. The public will have the opportunity at that meeting to offer their comments relative to the Torgeson proposal. Staff will provide a summary of information in the form of a proposed tax abatement plan so that if the abatement is approved, the standards and requirements for that particular tax abatement will be documented within an executed plan that is filed. It's important to know that this size abatement would be a, would be considered to be an incentive under state law, a business subsidy, and annual reporting is done, and there is a clawback provision. The state of Minnesota reviews these annually for every project that we participate in under the business subsidy law, and they notify us if, in their opinion, the project is not meeting the standards that it was intended to meet. So, in addition to the city watching it, the state of Minnesota does a pretty good job of it as well. If the city approves it, that's one part of it that's completed. The county would be asked to go through the same process, and Mr. Rehnquist from the EDC is supposed to be leading the charge with the county board.
Does that answer your question, Algie?
Yes.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Then we have a motion on the table. Councilman Christians.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, this is just a vote to have the hearing. However, there is a little caveat to it that says that we give preliminary approval for the tax abatement. I'm all for the hearing, and then we'll probably hear some more discussion then, and maybe Mr. Peterson could answer some of these questions that Ms. Amon has, and I certainly would like a copy of that, I bet the other councilmembers would too. So, I'm going to amend the recommendation. I will, I'll make a motion that we take out. Restate the motion that says that the tax abatement public hearing be set for April 15th, 2013, to consider the abatement request. In other words, taking out council give preliminary approval. It sounds like there's some question here tonight, but I think we need to have the hearing, and we can vote on it then whether or not it will be approved, and--
Did you say that we had a question for Councilman Fagerly on the table?
To set the hearing for--
The original motion is Councilmember Fagerly--
Okay, so you're amending the hearing, the hearing.
I'll second his amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Motion has been made and seconded to amend the hearing or the recommendation that the tax abatement be set at a public hearing on April 15th at the council meeting to consider the abatement request. And that would be a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Discussion. Go ahead.
I wish, I just wish I could, I can state some of this information on this, on this piece of paper. But again, we have been asked, I asked staff after the Lakeland Hotel project to come up with a policy, we are policymakers, to make a policy on tax abatements so we don't get put in this situation again and be playing political favorites or playing politician to any group. Again, we're being put in that situation. It's not based on facts or policy. We are not making a good choice to say, in support of Ron's motion, to give preliminary approval, and we don't know the numbers. We don't know the financial stability of the company, whether or not they have means and ways to take care of the abatement themselves. We don't know what length and what terms and what the overall expense to the taxpayers is going to be. We have no information to make a sound decision, and other than just, it's a, it's a good thing to say, "I'm for jobs. I'm for jobs. I'll give you a tax break." But how about the next person down the road who's building a new house, the next person who's starting a new business? Where do we stop and who do we give it to? And what are the benefits? We have nothing to base this on. We have not had a good, honest, open dialogue and investigation into what the benefits of our tax abatements are. What are we getting back in return? There should be some benefits. Otherwise, why are we doing it? We have nothing. And it's been a year. We don't have a policy. We've asked staff to bring back--
Councilmember Amon.
There has not been a policy brought back. There has not been any discussion on it. The last comment from Mr. Peterson five months ago was that, "I'll get together with Ken Warner from the chamber and Steve Reinhuest, and we'll draft something and bring it back to the committee for discussion." I'm sorry, we are the people in charge here. We have not had anything. I'm being put in the same situation, and it's very uncomfortable for me to sit here and show animosity, but I am. I'm a little upset that nothing's been done in this, and we're being put in the same situation again. And I don't care who's responsible, I think we know who is not responsible for getting the job done, but we're in the same situation, and we have not even discussed it, and the issue came up again. Last council meeting, I brought up the issue that we refer to committee for consideration to policy, because I knew this was going to come up. Now, we're sitting in this situation where something is forced down our throat. Either you vote for this or you're against jobs and creating jobs in the community. You're against helping big business. How about helping the people themselves? The businesses help take care of themselves, government should be there to assist them, not to bail them out financially. I will support this motion.
Councilman Stevens, did you want to--
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to that, in terms of a policy, what the city has used and what the city has used for this policy, in lack of a specific reference to tax abatement, is we have used our tax incentive and our tax incentive financing policies, which follow the state guidelines, which are very similar to how we use tax abatements, and that is what the city has used for prior abatements, and that is the criteria that we use to look at this abatement, and is also what was discussed with the, with the Community Development Committee, and the guidelines were to stick, and the general consensus of the Community Development Committee is to stick with those guidelines and provide broad latitude. It is a discretionary choice of the city council, and again, it is simply to set the hearing this evening to make the, and then to make a decision on April 15th whether the council chooses to go forward with the abatement or not.
If I call--
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor. Call for the question here. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to call for the question. And this is a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Councilman Christianson?
The question is for my amendment, correct?
Sure.
That was, I'm going to state it specifically like Mr. Thaden said we should. My amendment is to read as following. That the council, and then strike, give preliminary approval to the tax abatement and that, strike that and put the word "set" above it. Public hearing, cross out "be set," and then leave the rest of it. So, it reads that the council set a public hearing for April 15, 2013, to consider the abatement request.
And that motion carries, am I right?
No.
No, no, we haven't voted.
It was just calling for the question, to vote.
Oh, okay.
That is now the amended motion.
That is the amended motion, and so now we vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
We should, there still should be discussion.
We had discussion.
Yeah, but we can't.
We still can have more.
We can't have discuss, can't have discussion on the amendment. If you voted, closed debate, recall for the question on Ron's amendment.
That's right.
Discussion's done. On the amendment, I believe.
On the amendment, so we can vote on the amendment?
We need to. Technically, yes, but the main motion is so changed, it is the amendment, so there'll be nothing left. So, you're done discussing.
So, now we call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No. No.
That motion carries.
Okay. All right, item three, tax abatement policies for information only. And this was brought to the committee by request of Councilman Amon. Staff reviewed the current policies for development incentives, specifically as they relate to tax increment financing. These are the policies that have been used in the past to review tax abatement requests. In the course of researching other communities, very little in the way of tax abatement policies were discovered. This is due primarily to the fact that tax abatement policies grant taxing jurisdictions broader discretionary authority than do most of the other financing incentives. Staff was recommending that the city keep the policies flexible so that the council retains their broad discretion in granting or denying tax abatement requests. It was noted that the four active abatements would all be retired within the next three years. In the course of discussing actual abatement policies, staff proposed that the policies include language that will follow the tax increment financing policies, but will eliminate the requirement that an application demonstrate financial need. This is not a statutory requirement. Staff will draft a base tax, or will draft a broad-based tax abatement policy and return those policies to the committee in the near future for discussion. And when they do that, Councilman Amon, if you want to sit in for me, you can do that, since you're so concerned about this.
I'd love to. Thank you.
All right. But to me, it appears that someone has a chip on their shoulder, and we need to get off of that. We're supposed to work as a team here.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
So, that was for information only?
No, point of order. Please explain yourself. I believe I have a right to explain that comment.
Well, you said, what about the average guy building a house? What about Viking Motel? They had the same opportunity if they wanted to, whoever purchased it. I don't know who purchased it, but they're renovating it, making it into little apartments. They could have come to the city and asked for abatement also, but they didn't. Mid-Minnesota Commission--
I don't think we want to get into a discussion over this. Let's continue on.
So, item number four, Rule Tire Building. Staff provided an update on the offer by the family of Jim Rule to give the former Rule Tire property to the city. Research has, that research has determined that there's a minor amount of asbestos ceiling tile in the building. Fuel tanks have already been removed, and no other environmental hazards have been identified. The family has agreed to pay the delinquent taxes on the property. Jolene Hovland of Habitat for Humanity was present to indicate their interest in a portion of the property. The committee discussed various options for obtaining and using the property, including the city receiving it all and leasing a portion of the property to Habitat for Humanity. Another option might be that the family gifts a portion of the property to each entity. Staff will follow up with the city attorney regarding the options for resale, gifting, or leasing if the city requires the property. or leasing if the city requires the property. A motion was made and seconded by Councilman Nelson and seconded by Johnson and passed to submit the proposal to the planning commission for their charter required review and to pursue, pursue other options for acquisition and the use of the site. And I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to submit the proposal to the planning commission for their charter required review and to pursue other options for acquisition and use of the site. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
There was no further business, so I'll move to file a motion if there's no questions.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for March 28, 2013. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to item number three, which is, was for information only, tax abatement policies. I know this, the explanation is pretty simple, but is staff looking for recommendations too for that policy from the council or just giving us information? I mean.
At the committee, the staff asked for recommendations from the committee. And the recommendations, I mean, I'll let Councilmember Fagerly speak to that, I think.
Well, it's so, so broad. We're at our own discretion. The state, we have to play by the state rules. So Bruce is going to come up with the policy and bring it back to the committee to see if we agree, if we want to add anything to it.
Okay. I wasn't at the meeting, so I wasn't able to relay any suggestions. And I'm looking at this sentence that says, "To eliminate the requirement that demonstrates financial need." Why would we eliminate that requirement? I mean, I, it seems like if they can't demonstrate a need, I mean, if they can afford it, why would we do it? I'm lost, I guess.
The state doesn't require it.
In the granting of a tax increment financing, there's a statutorily expressed requirement for, it's called a but-for test. But for the use of tax increment financing, the company will not do that project. That has, you have to reach that conclusion based on a process of financial review of the company's pro forma, which would tell you what their anticipated costs are, what their anticipated income is, and to find out if in fact the project is going to generate the necessary cash flow to service the debt. That is not a requirement in the tax abatement statute. And so if the council wants to maintain it at that level, that's your prerogative. I personally think it's too cumbersome to do a complete financial analysis from what is, in my opinion, a relatively minor request for assistance or a business subsidy, given the scale of the project and the future benefit. I guess that, that's.
So you think we need to eliminate it because evidently, put it in there, eliminate that to demonstrate the need?
Well, it isn't our TIF policies right now.
I understand that.
And what I said was, I think we need to follow the TIF policies in general, but then I will be tweaking those in my recommendation back to committee. And one of those tweaks would be the elimination of the financial analysis. It's always good to talk to the company and say, "What's prompting your request?" And at the public hearing, there will be representatives from Torgerson Properties here and the council's certainly free to ask those questions. They are the developers. They are coming to you with the request. They will stand here and answer your questions.
This has nothing to do with that. I'm talking strictly about policy.
Yeah, I think.
Tax abatement policy.
I think, Councilmember Christensen, if I may, I think the recommendation for the staff with that again is to give the council the broadest latitude possible. I mean, if we, if we do not include that, it doesn't preclude you from asking those questions when it's before you.
At the time.
At the time. If it's stated in there as part of the policy, the staff believes that that makes it perhaps too restrictive because a tax abatement has, you know, you have broader discretion over a tax abatement. And our recommendation to, the staff recommendation to the council is to try to retain that broad discretion so that you can make those decisions as a council and on a case-by-case basis and look at each, and because each property, each project tends to be different and unique. And so we're going to create a policy for you, but we want to give you broad latitude in that policy to make those decisions.
And historically, ours have been in the industrial base. I mean, I don't think we've ever done one for a service-based company this large. And again, I'm not talking about that project. I'm talking about policies. Another suggestion I had was, you know, if we're going to abate some taxes for a project in town, is there, can we make stipulations as to you have to use local contractors or is that, that's against the law too? Or can we say, "Since we're abating your taxes, you have to buy your materials locally or use, use as many local contractors as possible?" Because, you know, we're talking about buy local. The chamber pushes that all the time, but is that illegal?
Defer to the city attorney.
Probably, yes, it is.
Okay. Well, I thought I'd ask.
Generally can't restrain the trade that way as far as requiring local contractors or local products to be used. I mean, it's, probably all be subject to competitive bidding. Anyone could bid.
Okay. Because it just seemed like we're abating taxes and everybody else got to pick up the load, that maybe it should be bought locally and help everybody out. And then did we, is there something in the, the TIF rules about competition too? Is, I thought we came upon that, it was a tax abatement hearing at a TIF project.
It's a consideration.
Where it says, you know, if, if there's competition in town for this particular thing, we can say, you know, I don't think we should do this.
The TIF policy lists that as one of the considerations for the council in granting or denying a TIF request. It would be my recommendation that that remain part of the tax abatement review, but it's not a qualifier or a disqualifier. It's a consideration. Every project's going to be a little bit different and, you know, without referring to the Torgerson Property Project directly, I think you've got a situation here that does set it apart from other lodging facilities in the community. And that's part of what I took under consideration before I came to the committee with my recommendation.
So it does come into play. I mean, it, okay. Well, that was my, my suggestions or recommendations and I just wanted to air them. Thank you.
I think we have a motion on the table.
Mr. Mayor?
Correct. All those in, I'm sorry.
Well, just one point that, well, several points, but I'm not going to bother to call them tonight. A policy is made so we reach a consensus. There is no policy. I doubt everyone here understands abatement policy. I don't. I started to read it last night. Discussion or right hooks and left hooks coming at me from any individual, I think, is inappropriate. But also, it shows that the inability of people to want to do homework with this job. Do your homework. You'll read something you'll never learn before.
Call for the question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Kevin, we have a consideration of liquor license renewals.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, you have before you the list of establishments who have requested renewal of their current liquor license and have completed the deadline of having it in by March 11th. These establishments have been reviewed by the chief of police to make certain their utilities are current as their taxes also, property taxes to the city. Seeing the list, it is staff's recommendation that we approve these licenses for the fiscal year of April 25, 2013 to April 24, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve all the licenses listed from April 25th of this year to April 24th of next year. Roll call.
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Kevin, did you want to explain the next one to us?
Yes, sir.
Consideration of Civic Center Arena Special Event, On Sale Liquor License.
You have an application before you, put in by the On Sale Liquor License Holder Candy Entertainment Center to hold a, or to assist the West Central Builders Association, who is holding a two-day show out at the Civic Center Arena. They plan to serve free alcohol to their members after the closing hours of the event and all the patrons have gone home. We have the Civic Center Arena Special Event permit to have this completed and it is staff's recommendation that we approve this license for those stated dates.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the Civic Center Arena Special Event On Sale Liquor License by permit. Now, this says a motion, but am I to understand that anything having to do with a liquor license is a roll call?
That is correct, sir.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. And then on the next one, we have the consideration of City Park Special Event by On Sale Liquor License Holder Permit. Kevin, you want to explain that?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, the annual event of the Wilmer Fest activities are being held something like June 19 through June 23. On Saturday, June 22, the Wilmer Fest Committee is holding a beach party with a couple of bands and they are trying to avail themselves of our City Park Special Event Permit to consume alcohol on the grounds. The applicant is Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery LLC and the onsite employee there is listed as David Baker. It is staff's, oh, so I guess it is reviewed by the Community Education and Recreation Board on the 22nd of March. They also gave it their approval. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that we approve this permit.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the permit of the Wilmer Fest Beach Party on June 22, 2013 to serve alcohol. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Consideration of the contract with Ridgewater College for purposes of firefighter training. Gary, would you like to tell us about that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On occasion, the department gets structures for live fire training. So my request is to allow the city administrator to enter into contract with Ridgewater College each time a structure becomes available for purposes of firefighter training. These come up quickly on occasion, so it's easier to allow the city administrator enter into these versus coming to council on a regular basis to enter into them. So the request or the staff recommendations allow the city administrator to enter into contract with Ridgewater College, providing the opportunity for the department to conduct live fire training exercises within acquired structures as they become available within the community. Is there any discussion?
Motion.
Resolution.
Is it a resolution?
Yes.
We've turned into that. Roll call.
Councilmember Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Will enter into the announcement of council committee meeting dates. Councilman Fagerly.
No meeting planned.
Councilman Christensen.
Tuesday, April 9, 4:45. Public work, public safety.
Councilman Aman, labor?
No, no labor committee.
And who am I forgetting?
Me.
Finance.
Councilman Dennis. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee will meet Monday, April 8 at 4:45.
And we have an announcement. Councilman Aman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I brought the issue up. I move that we, that the city council and mayor and staff come up with a plan for updating the city council on pending goals and their objectives and responsibility to the affected parties on a monthly basis.
And do you have a plan as to how we do that?
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Councilman Nelson.
Mr. Mayor, I am just curious when the last time you had a planning session was and what goals he's referring to. I think the documents that I looked at looked like the last work session was in 2011. So I'm curious about what goals he's talking about and, and when the plan is.
Thank you for asking that question. As a team, we should be informed of the goals and objectives that we have to discuss openly and candidly where we are with those objectives and how we're coming with them with staff, whether or not there is assistance that's needed by us or we're slacking in our duties, not doing the appropriate thing, and also who's responsible for implementing those actions. I think that's the way a business operates and by doing that, I think we had, if we had a monthly update on our goals and objectives or quarterly or whatever the council would like to, I think it would be a good thing. We can talk about such things as tax abatements or we can talk about things that we need to do here, where are we coming with this policy? By doing that, I think we would, we would collaborate with staff in accomplishing our goals and objectives. Right now, we seem to be bogged down in our day-to-day operations, our month-to-month operations and not really stepping back and saying, "Hey, how are we doing on that? How's it coming? What do we need to do?" That's my objective for the whole meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I still have the question. Are you referring to the goals that were done in the work session in 2011 or are you talking about doing a new work session and setting some goals and setting some strategies and how you're going to implement them and timeframes and those? So are you referring to the 2011 or are you suggesting that this council have a planning session?
The 2011 goals, I think we failed as a council and mayor not to address these on at least a monthly or quarterly basis and be updated on them. And it's not anybody's fault. It's just that we need to get reorganized and I think as a team, we should do that.
So you still?
And also, I think a retreat is an excellent idea. Whether or not it's going to be constructive, I don't know if it's absolutely necessary. For you, I'm sure it would be very helpful to you.
I, I was surprised. I thought the goals that were listed in 2011 were great, but I asked where the 2012 goals were and there aren't any and I don't think there was a plan to do 2013. So I'm questioning why you're asking about goals that are two years old.
Yeah. Well, there's new goals that have been coming, or that have came up also that arise. We need to implement the stormwater, the stormwater issue, how we're going to pay for it. There's just all kinds of ongoing things that come up and new things that come up with the council all the time, new ideas and new thoughts and staff's thoughts. And I think we need to sit down and refocus. How we accomplish that as a group, I don't, I'm not sure, but I think it's time for action or rather than complaining about things, I like to just start implementing and coming to consensus in some of these issues and how we're going to accomplish them. Right now, we're, we're too scattered. We're not, we're not focused in on the big picture.
Councilman Anderson, did you have a comment?
I did.
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hear what you're saying, but I have a sense that maybe we're jumping ahead on that. We're doing an organizational assessment right now. I would hope that you mentioned those very things to the person that interviewed you, and they, I'm hopeful, are going to come up with ideas on how we can operate differently and more effectively. So, you know, I would ask that you withdraw your motion and wait until after we get the organizational assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Mayor, if I could...
Go ahead, Councilman Christensen, I think he was next.
When is that study going to be completed, Furzman?
June. The study is to be completed in June, and there will be some interim reports along the way.
I'll be patient, I can wait. I'll withdraw my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen.
I'll withdraw my second, but I do want to comment. I think the motion's a good motion. However, I'm looking at the atmosphere, the environment, we're missing a city engineer. Bruce is covering two departments. We've had multiple distractions this council has in the last eight to 12 months, and it's hard to get your head on straight every morning. Very hard.
Thank you.
So I think his motion is a good motion, but again, we, the June deadline for this reorganizational study, we can wait till then, but I do agree with Audrey and Steve that we should probably have a retreat somewhere out of town and get some things hashed out. I think that would be a very good thing after this Mr. Furzman brings his findings or whatever.
Which is what?
June.
June. Three months, two months?
That was it.
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
No move. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion?
We are adjourned.